Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this message is being recorded, we just approved the minutes. And we'll now go to the second item on this agenda again, we're here Monday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. The first item is a discussion to vacate a section of Nordic Valley Road. We have Tammy Adalot, Charlie Ewer, Bill Kobe. Uh, we have also Stephanie, let's just go around the table and also to the back row after that, starting with the, starting with, well, Gage will start with you.
Gage Fowler, Weaver County.
Stephanie Russell, uh, I'm not my daughter, through the county.
Charlie Ewer planning.
Tammy, welcome, we're attending planning.
Brooke Cole with G W C Capital.
Eric Langbart, Langbart Design Group.
One hundred and five with Nordic Valley.
Nathan Chelenburg with the G W C Capital.
Brian Christofferson with G W C Capital.
Rick Grover planning.
Justin Park, Weaver County.
Jim Bollos, Weaver County.
Jim Harvey, Weaver County.
Christopher Crockett with the Attorney's Office.
Bill Kobe with the planner.
Great, Miss Adalot, you're listed first on the agenda, I'm gonna turn the time over to you, and if you'll, then move that to whatever way you feel impressed to do so.
Sure, uh, just kind of a brief introduction, this area of Arctic Valley received approval for, a reason to the form based code about eighteen months ago, uh, the team from Nordic is here to submit, uh, informally, I guess, um, a portion of that proposal, which is to vacate a section of, is it Nordic Valley Way?
Yeah.
Um, and so I'm gonna turn it over to them and let them present that. At some point in the future, this will come before you through a formal application process, but for now, it's just a discussion item.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, I'm gonna let Eric Langibar walk you through, uh, the vacating portion of it and the new road portion, if you don't mind, based on the development agreement that's in place and the master plan that's in place.
Thank you, Brooke, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, so you can see the exhibit on the screen here, and then I brought a hard copy there on the table, because I always like, just for reference, north is to your right on the screen and to you commissioners, um, and then the existing, few, the old existing barn is here, their existing maintenance facility is here, and then you can see in this purple hatch, this is the existing plus or minus sixty-five foot right of way, Nordic Valley Way. And so what we are proposing for various reasons is to, as per allowed, and Charlie and Tammy can get into the nuances of the form based code, uh, shifting our approved street regulating plan, which is consisting of four different street types, and I'll walk you through that in a little bit. But shifting that up to plus or minus two hundred feet to page down, uh, or to the east.
So you'd shift, um, just for those online, I'm trying to be respectful.
Thank you.
This part here, then you'd shift that over to this part here.
That's correct, yeah, and so currently, our street regulating plan, we do have four types, and then the dark red is what's called mixed use commercial. The orange is the multifamily residential, the light orange or sort of yellowish is the single family small residential, and then the green is the rural residential. And so all of our approved, street regulating plan types, we are conforming to and maintaining. But all we're proposing is that we would like to shift that down two hundred feet, and we have a series of, I think, reasons and benefits that, you know, would be, uh, ideal, I think if we wanna walk through those, and I'll break if you wanna dive into that, or if you want me to, but is that, all of those street types have certain dimensions, we've worked very closely with Charlie, we're representing everything exactly the same on here, um, except for this shift, and there's, there's reasons for the shift.
So with that, um, previously, when the master plan was approved and the street regulating plan was adopted as part of that development agreement, not all of the property on both sides of the street was owned by the same entity. Uh, the master plan was done showing some of what could happen on the old golf course land down there, but now that the land has been transacted, and, um, it's under one ownership, figuring out the optimum, location for that road and for the skatable terrain in here is what is, is, um, prompting the shift here. One, now that it can be done, because the ownership is there, but then two, at the end of the day, since this is a unique land use, uh, ski resort, it's not something that is done every single day everywhere, um, there's certain elements that want to be on one side of the street versus the other. And so in moving this, uh, this over, does a couple of things, one, it allows for a greater, um, cohesiveness for skating on one side of the street versus the other, there's, there's parking, uh, considerations there as well. You can expand the beginner ski school and those elements, uh, which is what Nordic's really known for, on, on this side by shifting the road over, and it pulls the development down off of the hillside a little bit more and reduces its visual impact as well, because you're pulling it not only further to the east, but pulling it vertically down off of the hill as well. Um, previously, in the previous plan, it had shown a, uh, conceptually, it's shown a ski bridge and a ski plaza going over the road and down into the other side, uh, with being able to shift the road here, that does not have to be done, uh, and it can all be contained just in one area. So it makes, it creates a more viable ski beach area, meaning where more of the commercial can be concentrated to, instead of trying to create two different centers of the universe, you can create one center of the universe related to that, um, and then also from the skiability perspective, and actually how you run the mountain, it's more efficient to keep it in one location as well, instead of trying to do it on a bridge, and then also lower in the valley floor. When you talk about noise that comes in and out of the, uh, the snow making guns, things like that, it's all contained in one area versus trying to scatter it down through the residential areas. So, um, the other piece, and then we get to the constructability component of this, is if we were to build that street off, and then, uh, have it all done and functioned and just make the tie-in points, makes for much less of a disturbance as well, when to the, uh, to the overall traffic flow and everything up there during the actual construction of it, because, right now, if we were to go reconstruct this road to the new right of way widths and everything that's here, and the requirements of the parking and everything else, that road would be closed for a certain period of time. If we should build the road two hundred feet lower, or up to two hundred feet lower, now we're just talking about the tie-in points and then minor disturbance, uh, uh, from the usability perspective on either, on either end. So with that, that's, that's the reasons why we would like to move this, I think it makes for a, a better plan for more, um, cohesiveness to the actual village itself, which is, we want the viable commercial, um. That's the most important part here, is that I think is going, is what's driving the economic engine for this as well, and, and by doing so, this allows, uh, allows for, uh, a better opportunity for that to, to actually come to fruition.
Fantastic, I'm gonna go to Mr. Ewer, Charlie, any comment?
Yeah, so just briefly on, uh, this, we've got a street regulating plan, in fact, um, let me share my screen here. Nevermind, uh.
You want the, you want this over here, Charlie, or you? I need to stop.
Sorry, I'm gonna talk while doing two things at once, I closed the screen where I was logged in, um. So, the, uh, the idea here with the street regulating plan is, the street regulating, regulating plan allows streets that are shown on the map, to be moved plus or minus two hundred feet, like, like Eric mentioned, and that's just a by right, uh, deal. Now, the thing that's not by right is, if this was a brand new street being proposed, they would have the by right, um, allowance to, to move, uh, a proposed street plus or minus two hundred feet, the reason we do that is because sometimes it's, the roads are proposed like on a property line, where they don't get the financial benefit of developing to this size. Uh, these are expensive streets, and so allowing them to get the benefit of developing both sides of the road, um, is gonna be important to making these projects pencil. The more pencillable these projects are, the higher the opportunity the county has in transferring development, right? So just trying to break down some of the barriers, the financial barriers to get T D Rs to move around. We already know this project, they've already got T D Rs, um, moved from the mountainside down to the base. And so just moving the road itself would be a legislative action by you guys, because it requires you to vacate by ordinance the existing road. And then after the road has been vacated, or just prior to the road being vacated, you'll, um, accept a, um, dedication plat for the, the new alignment. The acceptance of the dedication plat is technically administrative action, but the vacation of the existing road is a legislative action. And so that's where your, your guys' purview on whether or not this even happens is, comes into play. Um, I'm about to pull that map up, just so you can see the differences in the current street regulating plan. Okay, so the black line that you can see from there, that kind of follows the, uh, the line that they have there, just roughly, um, because the existing street regulating plan, this is actually, their street regulating plan does not include this link right here, that link was added in, it's hard to see, this link right here. That link was added in, um, with a subsequent update to the street regulating plan, but their development agreement was adopted prior to that link being there. But for the most part, everything else is pretty much the same. So moving this road to, uh, from being where the red line is coming across here, to the, uh, where the black line is, really, is fairly inconsequential to the future of the area, but provides a big benefit, I think, to the ski resort, so I think planning would recommend approval of it. The big changes between the lines on these maps and the lines that you see in front of you, it's not currently, um, being requested. But it is something that I think the, uh, the applicants would like to request at some point in the future. But the big question at hand is, do we allow that public right of way to be moved? Any questions for me on that?
Commissioner Fowler, we'll go listen your portfolio, we'll go to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, well, being somewhat familiar with this, um, I think this makes a lot of sense. First off, Charlie, I think it does benefit a lot of the people up through here that use access, um, and I think it presents, um, a good case for public safety, because if you ever driven from here or tried to cross this road, when there's a lot of people at that resort,
Yeah.
and there's eight, ten feet of snow on the side of the road, yeah, it gets to be a little problematic, so this, and this is, uh.
Taking all that stress off that.
Taking the stress off of this, it actually gives these people both egress and ingress to their residence away from a commercial area, away from potential safety hazards, so I think it makes a lot of sense, plus it's just more viable for a skier experience for those people. Um, takes the road out of contention, and again, from a retail standpoint, that's their business, not mine, but I just think we're gonna have a good development there. Uh, you've probably heard me say this before, but our good governor says, good infrastructure makes good development. I may have repeated that one the last, so anyway, I think that's good infrastructure, I fully support it. Um, I mean, obviously, the timing, I'm assuming we would, we'd have to meet that, we'd, you know, wanna make sure this is ready to roll before we, before we start blockading off this, I trust, uh, Laurent and Brooke to do that, but I, to me, it makes a lot of sense for a couple reasons. And existing residents benefit, in my mind.
Mr. Bollos.
Yeah, are there any homes, uh, current homes that are impacted by the new location?
No. No, it's all, both sides are, sides are owned by, uh, the developer.
Okay, so if the, if the current road is vacated, will the current road still be in use by the resort?
No, this would replace, so if we came forward with the road that's there, we would have to improve it to these, uh, street regulating widths, which is a hundred foot right of way for the mixed use commercial.
Right.
Varies a little bit, so we are just doing that, but in this new location, so that would be vacated completely.
I understand, okay, that's, I understand that.
Yeah.
But it won't be of use to the resort in.
We won't use it in any way, shape, or form.
Okay.
No.
So that's, that's all I have.
Great, I, I felt impressed, Rick, do you have any comment regarding this?
I do, um, I, I like the way this road's going, and as I'm looking at this too, it's gonna help slow down traffic.
Yeah.
Um, which is gonna be a problem in that area to reduce, you know, safety, um, issues and that with the public as well.
Yeah, and I think that was one thing that Brooke, that's, it's a very good point, um, the other thing it does is it gives us more movement in our buildings and the ability, before, we were pretty constrained with the straight road, and so our buildings were kind of layered in there the same way, so it kind of goes hand in hand with your comment about that street, becoming a little bit safer, I think it also gives us just more movement and more interest, I think, architecturally.
It adjusts the roundabout, uh, biking drive just a little bit to the north and east, which is a little platter, which will, um, it'll, uh, level off the, um, approach to the roundabout from biking, um, a little bit more than it is, it's kind of steep right now, and if that gets icy, you're sliding through that intersection.
Yeah.
Um, so this will allow you to kind of get a little bit more grip and then go through that roundabout, um, a little bit more controlled. So there's the other, uh, factor of safety to the, the public, and keep in mind, once the new road is built, it'll be built to the new standards that's in the form based zone. So you'll have, uh, for part of it, you'll have parking on both sides, angle parking, for the other part of it, you might have, um, parallel parking, um, but it's gonna be wider, a little bit more asphalt, the county has a development agreement where the county obviously will be stone removal of the streets, but the developer has the opportunity and obligation, if they want more snow removal for those parking areas and in the streets, to go out and move it themselves. And so this gives a lot of opportunity for the public to benefit, um, as well as the developer to benefit.
So a designed, like, street parking as opposed to what it is now, which is?
Which is, uh.
Wow, yeah.
Which is not much.
No, it's, yeah.
It's a narrow asphalt road, as soon as the new.
Yeah, it's a single lane, if, at best, a lot of those days, and so.
Yep, the new road will be, uh, more of an urban, um, sized road with parking and sidewalks and bike lanes and pedestrian connectivity, all that kind of stuff in the future.
Great, to you too, uh, Eric or Brooke, do you have any other questions or to your presentation?
No, I appreciate you allowing us to present this and for your consideration.
Great, I don't believe, uh, Mr. Crockett, I don't believe this requires or any action today, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you.
And the, Laurent, to you, or Nathan, or is it Ryan? The three of you have anything you'd like to say while you're here?
No, we're the construction guys, and I think we'll do, uh, in the sequencing, we build the new road before the old road's vacated, of course.
So we won't ever, we won't ever deny access to the people who's there.
Yeah, great, great. No, I'm grateful for the occasion to be here with you.
Thank you.
And I, I like also the fact that we can create maybe a community center in the middle of these streets.
Yeah.
I think it makes it really a truer village, which is really our concept up there.
Yeah.
Gives the ability to have a village, which for a ski resort, boy, it just makes so much sense.
Yeah, we think there's multiple positives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the, in the future, when you do see the adjustment to the street regulating plan, um, just to keep your mind operating a little bit, that little square in the middle, uh, will be public space, so I think police will be proposed to be public space. Um, so you'll get, uh, an opportunity to kind of do like we did over in Eagle Crossing, um, a plaza style, uh, development there. And also, you can see from some of the colors being pulled off of, what is that, Nordic Valley, the other Nordic Valley?
Nordic Valley Road.
Yeah, the east-west connection, um, that can change back to kind of a more rural, uh, field, because all of their density will be on the inside, which we heard from some landowners along that road, that they don't wanna see, if the previous free regulating plan shows that road as the commercial space.
This just makes it almost a piece of cake for those guys, doesn't it?
Again, that's a different decision a little bit later, but, uh, they kind of go hand in hand, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for them to ask for a vacation of the right of way if they cancel.
I mean, that'll be, if they don't want any traffic, that just solves the whole thing, doesn't it, for them? Uh, they ought to be, that's not really good.
We're focusing all of our energy on that, and we try to internalize it more.
Yeah.
More possible, and, um, just wanna make one direction, Charlie, to, to something, so that that's very clear on the record. Um, the public space here in the middle, this is, this is the land that the, uh, Nordic Village Community Foundation, we're gonna deed to them, and they're going to build and own, it's not gonna be a public park or a, or a Weaver County owned facility, it's gonna be the foundation who owns that for the community benefit. Right, good, just wanna make sure that, that, that you weren't thinking you had to accept a park and go and build it and those things.
Thank you, that's important.
Just looking at parcel lines, uh, there is one home right by the roundabout, um, that, uh, will need work with those landowners, uh, because that does adjust their, actually, it looks like their driveway goes, yes, yeah, right there. And so we need to work with those landowners on that vacation, and maybe that stays a little cul-de-sac for them, but when you vacate.
Can we read where that is?
It's this one.
Yeah. When you vacate.
Oh, sure.
We vacate public interest or public right of way, unless you're assigning who it goes to, it automatically goes to owners on either side of the road, under state statute. And so that landowner will get a little bit more land, um, if you vacate in interest of the adjacent landowners, um, which that could be, yeah.
Is it one or more, more than one owner?
It's just one of them, and let me pull it up on the.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, we've got them. Same, probably won't hurt your feelings.
So what we propose to do is, then, then build a new driveway, kind of, of that, of that street. Beyond the roundabout, so that it's the private residential traffic, it's a natural sort of traffic.
On the side of the green.
They can have this, yeah.
And that is the one home that I think would be most affected by this shift away.
Yeah.
Away and down, so.
Hey, you can see on the screen right here a little better.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
Yeah, I appreciate you addressing that.
Yeah, thanks, Charlie.
That'll be great.
Any other thoughts, questions, you guys are okay to move forward?
I think you have a consensus here.
I think so.
Thank you.
For the right of way vacation, there is no planning commission involvement, so you know, uh, but for the street dedication of the adjusted street, there will be planning commission involvement for that. I'll go see that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so just a clarification for me, Charlie, then, um, two applications, one would be the new plat,
Mm-hmm.
the new road, and the new road dedication and all of that, and then the second application would be the vacate.
Yeah.
Portion.
Yeah, and we could.
We run those simultaneous?
We can run simultaneous, we can even do an ordinance that vacates the, the county's interest in that right of way, um, in the future, so we need to stay on this date or not until this date. That way, it gives you guys a little sense of assurance as you get ordered with your, because the other application of the plating is gonna be the longer one. With the ordinance for vacation, we just have to post notice and then sign up on properties, letting people know that that, uh, public hearing will happen, and then hold one public hearing with the county commission, and then, uh, that, that ordinance could be adopted.
Great. Thank you for the clarification of that, we'll move forward on both of those items, though.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ryan, I'm gonna need you to settle down next time, you've come in next minute, I'm just putting you on notice right now.
He gets that a lot.
Sorry, I was.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Take care.
Okay, 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 I just wanted to make sure you guys knew, because it's reopened, it's only one, but you have.
You can.
Okay.
The answer is yes.
Okay, all right, there's three spots, and I think we have five applications open.
Okay, we'll get at least two more, okay? Thank you.
You accept the part, and then I'll send you the other, so that's great, thanks.
Okay, commissioners, next on our agenda is the discussion, and we are early, well, we're about right there. It's discussion regarding the development proposals in Western Weaver County, including form based zoning. We have, uh, we have some guests here, but we'll wait just a moment, so we transition those who are in the room and add to those who are waiting outside. Please stand by. Okay. We're back, this is item number three on our agenda, this is a discussion regarding development proposals in Western Weaver County, including form based zoning. Uh, Charlie, let's just go around the room again, starting with you, Commissioner Fror.
Commissioner Fror. Weaver County.
Oh, sorry, Stephanie Russell, Economic Development, Weaver County.
Charlie Ewer planning.
Bill Kobe with planning.
Sean Wilkinson, Community Development.
Jake Earl, Black Pine.
Jeff Beck, Black Pine.
Mike Watkins, architect and, uh, town planner.
Daniel Stevens, Black Pine.
Geneva Blanchard, Black Pine.
Christopher Crockett with the Attorney's Office.
Jake Grover, planning.
Justin Park, Weaver County.
Richard Bollos, Weaver County.
Mr. Harvey, Weaver County, thank you, go ahead, uh, this is, I'm gonna go to you, Charlie, uh, you're listed first, go ahead, please.
So I wanted to introduce you guys to, you know, most of our Black Pine folks, but, uh, Mike Watkins, uh, and so planner, um, what was the big project you worked on in Eastern Zeward?
Uh, a number of, Norton Commons is one, or Kentlands, Norton Commons is outside Louisville.
Kentlands was, yeah, yeah, so, um, uh, good folks with Black Pine.
Hold on, just Norton Collins?
Norton Commons.
Commons, what's the other one?
Uh, Kentlands, K E N T L A N D S.
And that one's got some.
Maryland.
National plan, planners are required to know about it, or whatever.
If you're a planning geek like Charlie and me, and maybe Rick and Sean to an extent, they're not quite as geeky as Charlie.
Okay.
Some names that we know and have heard for years, so.
Sometimes when we work on general planning stuff, we refer to industry best practices and stuff like that, we can be one of them, so Black Pine folks are working with, um, uh, Mr. Watkins a little bit, to talk about some possibilities here in Weaver County, and Sean, I introduce you guys, and.
Yeah.
Turn the time over then.
No, thanks, I think, um, the, the hope today is, um, we, we've had conversations around the general plan and what, what it would take to actually enact a plan like we've talked about, or that you've mentioned, like Kentlands or Norton Commons, um, Mike's visiting for the, you know, for today, he's, he's from Kent, lives in Kentlands and works in Kentlands, and, um, the, the hope is, we feel like the general plan in West Weaver County generally has, we have a, a real opportunity to create a very special, um, development. And, um, I think today, the, the purpose of the work session is to try to understand the steps it would take to actually enact such a plan, understanding, you know, we have the general plan, uh, zoning, development agreement, all that kind of stuff, and, and Charlie, we talked, but, but I think we wanted to kind of get everyone in the room, understand what the steps would be to create a plan like this, and, and figure out what our path forward is to, to maybe come by.
And the goal is to not talk about specific pieces of property right now, right?
Okay.
So there are a few different locations that they're looking at, a couple of different pieces of property, uh, one of which, general plan does talk about a village center, and so that one shouldn't be too hard, uh, my recommendation, uh, to you guys as well as to them, would be to, uh, work on the street regulating plan for the form based code in that area. My recommendation to you guys as well as to them would be to work on the street regulating plan for the form-based code in that area. Just like we did a street regulating plan on forty-seven hundred west and twelfth street area. Just create a new one for this other particular village area. And then other property that we're looking at, who would probably require a general plan amendment. These folks aren't the only ones looking for a general plan amendment. But some of the land that may be in that general plan amendment area currently slated for agricultural uses. On that general plan map, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up so you can kind of see generally the map area. But. It's slated for agricultural uses. I think the general plan says two acres or greater, even though the zoning is probably one acre minimums. And so we had an expectation or an anticipation that maybe we have various landowners asking for. Changes to that plan in specific locations. If you guys recall, as we were going through the general plan mapping process, we kind of colored most of that area yellow out west. Except for a few key locations. Get this shared one more time. I didn't charge my, your battery for the weekend, so I apologize. This might die here. But until it does. The plan, so. It's the Western Weaver area, generally speaking, all that yellow is proposed. Medium to large lot residential. There's a little bit of green kind of in the middle and then a little bit to the north. That lighter green color is proposed agriculture. And then you can see the various other colors, oranges, reds, purples, ranging from multi-family to. Well, mixed residential all the way up to heavy commercial. So when we're looking at the map, the yellow area that is a lot of acreage in our one fifteen zone. And even the green area, the minimum one acre lot size is still quite a bit of acreage. We had to put a land use designation on the map for these areas. But there wasn't a greater contemplation on a place-by-place basis. So you might get some proposals at some locations, you know, just circling general areas that are colored yellow or green. Though we just didn't anticipate anything above and beyond medium to large residential at the time, because we didn't have a proposal for it. I think these folks here are asking, what's the possibility of likely going to change in the map? To show more specific development plans in more specific areas. Somewhat similar to maybe what we see here. You got. Hard to see. Village area, village area, village area, village area, village area, kind of in a linear line along that twelfth street. We had specific plans kind of coming through in those locations because it made more sense. And, and/or we had landowners asking for it. Now we have a landowner asking for maybe something similar to that, or somewhat similar to that in a different location. Trying to test the waters and see how you guys feel about that moving forward in the process. Any questions for us?
Any questions? Mr. Grover, I'd like to go to you first, and then I'll go to you, Commissioner Faur.
I think there's a lot of good things that could be happening out in this area with what we currently have. And then also looking at some of these changes. I, I think the street regulating plan that we have in place and how it complements the general plan helps promote these. Village areas and as we look to expand possibly down the road. I see that transitioning in really nicely, especially with Black Pine, what they've been doing.
Mr. Faur? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So. We talked about the general plan, so my concept about a general plan is just that. It's general. There's no specifics in it. I look at it as a smorgasbord. We need to pick and choose what fits in particular areas. And we do that by depending on developers that have a good plan. Landowners that come to us present a good plan that. Contemplates open space, contemplates walking trails, community. So, I mean, I think Daniel worked with me enough, he knows that kind of what. What I like to see out there, that's really a community, which includes obviously the transportation. The ability for affordable, or I should say obtainable housing. Affordable is no longer a good word. And, and really blend that into an area that we can say this is a community that makes sense without just. Doing a hodgepodge here and a hodgepodge wherever somebody comes to us. So I like the idea of the planning. I like the idea of what I've heard so far. Obviously, the devil's in the details, so we'll wait and see what happens. But at this level, I would say, yeah, I would be excited to see what takes place. As I mentioned to them before, the two concerns that I would have would be water and sewer. What we are with the water situation and working with Weaver Basin gives us a little insight. But those are, those are solvable problems, but it's, it's, you know, something we should address. And I'm, would be excited to see what transpires.
Commissioner Bollos, would you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I will say this. When the general plan was adopted and fully vetted through the public process. I assume, though I wasn't here at the time, that the public was on board with, with this and the planning commission as well. And I'm not opposed to changing the general plan, but I. I place heavy weight on the public input and the public. Reception of this change.
Good observation. The public is a little split. When it went up for incorporation a few years back, we, we started kind of toying with the idea of a new general plan. And then there was a proposal for that incorporation to happen, so we pushed pause on the plan. The incorporation didn't. Wasn't successful. It's actually a lot closer than I thought it would be on those votes. And really in my mind, the pro-incorporation was the folks who would rather not see very much growth happen. And density happen in this area. Folks on the other side were a little bit more inclined to protect property rights. Because a lot of the conversation that the pro-incorporation folks were having was, we'd like to see maybe twenty acre lots out. So I think you'll still see a split in that public process. However, going through the general plan process has really. Helped a lot of folks understand growth, stopping growth is probably not what happened. Probably not a good plan to, to dig in. It requires us to put our head in the sand. And so we changed a lot of hearts and minds going through that public process, realizing. It's either going to be good growth or it's going to be bad growth, but it's going to be growth either way. I suspect if we have a public hearing on any of these bigger projects coming in, we'll get a fair amount of pushback. But you have a planning commission that, for the most part, they haven't heard this specifically. The planning commission right now, for the most part, is on the good growth. So I think we'll see a lot of different ideas or, or against kind of that process.
And I think as you see those ideas come out, I think the planning commission, from what I've seen in the last year. Has the ability to help educate the public on what those two types of growth look like. And so I hope that through that process, the public can, you know, become more open to what, what's being proposed. Because education is the biggest piece of that. And what it really comes down to, I think people are. Aware of what the alternative is. That's all I'm asking, is that we go through that process very thoroughly. So that, so that the education component is there and that. Those who are willing to understand. Why it's wise to plan like this will, will come around and be more accepting or certain a change to the general plan.
Charlie, I've got a couple of questions. Let's say you take a particular color. And that doesn't matter what color, as far as I'm concerned, because I can only see like two of them. But let's say you take a particular color and I, I can see the red circles. Because those are where you're, those are receiving zones or those are village nodes. If you were to put a village node in another place that's not yet depicted on this map. Would that then require us to take off a village node or would it just be in addition to what you've already got?
It's your guys' choice. I mean, I, I don't know if I would recommend removing any. But you certainly can if you're concerned about impacts. There are a few locations I think we can focus on removing, if you were looking at, if you were looking into it.
Only to then maybe possibly add it in as, as later, I mean, but that might be anyway. So that's the first question. Second question, if we change the color. Let's say we have a chartreuse on there, then you're gonna have pink. Because I don't see it in one of those. Doesn't matter. Would you, if you take some color out of one, do you add that color back into somewhere else?
Great question. And again, totally up to you guys, after planning commission gives you recommendations. You can re-color the whole thing, high density if you wanted to. There's no requirement to necessarily balance growth in one place off of the back of a different place.
But we did come from one acre lots everywhere there, right?
That's right. That's right. So. Big change fast tends to stretch people's abilities to contemplate what their future's gonna look like. I think we're in the business of managing expectations more than we're in the business of anything else. And folks could really push back pretty hard who live in the area if you have big changes too fast. Maybe, I mean, obviously coloring all the yellow to bright pink would probably not be the greatest idea.
I don't know what that means, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah, going from residential to higher density commercial.
I'm getting, yeah, that's on there. That's great.
However, to your question though, there's a little bit of a TDR element in your question, I think. The general plan does have some. Specification on TDRs as maybe being used as a way of keeping some areas more open than other areas. We haven't implemented a specific TDR program except for in the village areas. And in those village areas, we're saying if you're going to get a higher density in these locations, it's a, it's a one to three transfer. You go out and you retire one development right from somewhere else and you get three in exchange for that. We haven't had big conversations about TDRs with the flagship folks who are kind of down in this area here. And so they're not expecting or anticipating any TDR requirement. And we've also had some different conversations with a few landowners in this area here, as well as a couple of landowners. One of which you'll see owns property down here in your next work session. About just giving them some potential up density. So that they can afford to do things like open spaces and parks, or even in this location, giving a little bit of up density. So that that village can realize the rooftops necessary to provide village services. So there's a little bit of a double-edged sword with TDRs. You put an extra expense on moving development rights. That minimizes or maybe negates a little bit of the motivation to do some of these villages. And if you don't have enough density points to move into a village, then you don't get the market that you need. To provide those services. And so then you get just kind of a sterile village that really struggles from a commercial perspective.
I understand what you're saying, but in my mind, we've already given them. But, you know, if they were sitting at one acre before and now they're sitting at a third acre, they'll forget that conversation when they come back to the next one, right?
That's exactly right.
So just be on record. I, I haven't forgotten that. So I wanted to just be clear about that right here. Commissioners, any, any other comments from neither of the two of you? From those on your team? Would any of you, the rest of you like to speak towards that today?
I'll turn the time to Mike, Mike.
It is Mike, isn't it? That's what I wrote your name down as.
That's correct. Well, I guess the, the primary point that I would like to make is that the form of growth. That, that these guys are talking about pursuing is completely different from sprawl, from what most places are used to. Where you isolate. Uses and then you get in your car and drive back and forth and back and forth. Just to meet the most basic daily needs like food or an education for your kids or to see. A parent or grandparent in the neighborhood. The form that they're interested in doing, the sort that I've been involved in designing now for sort of thirty-five years. Is the walkable neighborhood. So you organize the, the urban pattern and the buildings in a way that shapes a built environment. That really facilitates community interactions with people, not just cars. And I find it, it's an interesting time to me to be in this area talking about this. When Twentieth Street in Ogden is on this, this list of the top twenty-five main streets in the country. Clearly, we have the ability to do that sort of design at one time. And one looks at everything that's been built since and wonders if they said, okay, show us your next best street in the area. Which street or which piece of the neighborhood that might be. And, and this is not a unique situation to this area by any means to Weaver County or to Utah. It's the growth pattern in general in this country for the past fifty or sixty years. And I think we can change that. I think we can design a built environment that's worthy of the community life that people enjoy and aspire to.
And you said two examples of that, that I've written down were Norton Commons and Kentlands, Kentlands. In Maryland. Is that correct?
Norton Commons is outside Louisville, Kentucky.
Great. Super. Questions from any of the others in the room? Great. Well, I think from this group here, I think you'd, would like to see it a little more. I think before, if I could make a decision, I don't, I'm not a no, but I, I would like to see a little more. I'm intrigued by the idea, but I think I brought up the points that, that concern me and Commissioner Bollos, you. And you, Commissioner Faur, thank you. So does that give you what you need for today?
Yeah, very helpful.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for taking an interest in our community. We appreciate that. All right. Commissioners, I'll entertain a, a motion to saunter for five minutes.
Five minutes? So moved.
Second, all in favor? Let's saunter for five. Charlie. Charlie. Doug Hamblin and
Hamblin.
Hamblin, okay.
And Jason Hamblin.
Doug and Jason Hamblin. Welcome, gentlemen. Felix, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for your time, uh, this afternoon, commissioners. We, uh, we have this, uh, proposal that we'd like to get on the agenda within the next two or three weeks. We're still finalizing some of the details of the development agreement. So this was a proposed, uh, residential development out in Western Weaver. You can see it's, um, thirty-three hundred south and roughly thirty-five hundred west. And this, this proposal is a little bit interesting in the fact that, uh, it does have a little pocket in R three zoning there. Right, hugging the thirty-three hundred south street. Um, another thing that's kind of interesting about this is that it's really close to the West Haven boundary. Uh, let me show you the, um, the map here for the, shall bring up this second slide here. Show you the, the boundary of the West Haven. So you can see that it is actually part of the West Haven, uh, in, uh, annexation plan. So I imagine at some point it will be annexed, but going back to this, um, you can see that the part, the portion that's proposed to be rezoned to R one fifteen, it, it aligns perfectly with the existing general plan and the future land use map of the general plan. Uh, the, the portion that's proposed to become R three, uh, it does not. And so when, when we actually took this proposal to the planning commission, they, they, it was under the recommendation of Rick Grover and also the planning commission, they felt it best that we make a general plan amendment with the rezone. So we, we took, we went back, we regrouped and then we brought the project back before the planning commission. And we, we showed them what the map would look like, uh, if we amend the future land use map, which is what we have here where you have, you can see where I've just put a little, uh, little rectangle there on that south edge of the development to indicate that it is mixed residential. And so that the, the planning commission, they, they were okay with that and they, they kind of batted around different ideas. It's okay, like what's, what's the, um, what would this development look like without the R three? It would probably, you would probably have uh, less park spaces. Uh, you would, you would still have your pathway and connectivity. You would have your, you would just, it would be designed with your typical single family, uh, lot type development. And the planning commission ultimately decided that is probably a good option to have this, this little pocket of R three. Uh, simply because what they were able to offer with this R three is you've got some, some park space that will be, um, basically owned by the Taylor Westingdon Parks District as well as the pathways. And you also have, uh, an affordable housing element included with the accessory, I'm sorry, the, uh, the townhomes down here. So what, what the planning commission forwarded to the county was that the developer preserve eight percent of those ninety-eight townhome units toward affordable housing. And that would be done in coordination with the Weaver Housing Authority, Andy Beatles. And we did meet with Andy Beetle, Beatles and, and she, she was, she was more than happy to see, you know, some affordable housing aspect along with this development. Uh, and so that pretty much covers some of the details surrounding this proposal. Uh, we do have the developer, the developers here with us today that could also maybe shed some more light on any questions you might have. And what, what we're looking for with the planning, the planning division is considering at this point is wrapping up those final details of the development agreement, getting the, uh, the resolution that will accompany the general plan amendment, getting that ready. And, um, and that's, that's our, that's kind of what we're looking at today.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ewer, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I interject something. Uh, Felix has been working on, uh, more of, or some more of our long range projects. You've heard from a lot, a couple of projects over the last couple of weeks and I just wanted to let you know that kind of, not that he's got a totally different role, but that he's picking up the, the slack where we've got a little bit short staff and doing a great job.
This is, yeah, this is kind of new for you, Felix. It is newer. I mean, you've done, uh, to the Hamblins, I'll go, uh, any comments from you, gentlemen?
Yeah, you know, we've been working back and forth with the county, trying to come up with a plan that we feel is workable on our end. That the county would like to have. And we, I don't know how many times we've gone back and forth. We're happy with the layout. We're happy with the amount of park space that we're able to set aside for the community. And then some future pathways, uh, where the slough is going to be. That'll keep it open and, and some natural, some, you know, we're going to come in and improve. But, uh, all in all, uh, we're pleased with it. Uh, we're excited to try to bring in some affordable housing in the townhomes. Uh, that's something that we all know is a big thing on, you know, everybody's agenda. And so hopefully that's something that, uh, we will attack and, and hopefully be able to bring in not only a, affordable, but a nice, uh, you know, housing project. But other than that, uh, we're excited to tackle the project. Uh, we have a lot of things to do. Obviously to get the point of starting, but, uh, we're making some headway.
Uh, Commissioner Bolos, comments or questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Can you, Charlie, show me the adjacent properties, particularly across from the canal and what those zones are?
Would this help to see?
Do you want the current zones or do you want what the future land use map shows?
Future land use map.
So.
Okay. Yes, so the, this is the future land use map. Uh, if that's helpful, mo- most of this area is still zone your A one residential.
Currently?
Yes.
So the, so the proposed change to the orange, that little orange piece where the townhomes are proposed. And that mirrors what's across the canal to the east.
It does.
Yes. Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we didn't push back, um, on it when, when the county can ask for it. We thought, well, you know, if there's anywhere that's prime for change or ripe for change, it's stuff that's right adjacent to where we've already said. When we do in the general plan process, we just use the canal as a delineation, not for any specific reason. Just because that created a nice hard, hard edge. But when you drive out there, you, you don't know you drove over a cow. It's all flat and so you really can't see that hard edge in person. Um, not that we recommend continuing to creeping, we don't recommend creeping, creeping down the road with the higher density. But we thought after working with the park district, um, the original proposal was something for a couple acre park. We asked developer what, what they need in order to give the park district a five acre park. The total development open space, actually there's quite a bit of open space in there because there's some sloughs and then the alignment along the canal. Um, that they were gonna keep us open, but the park district said we can't play soccer in a slough. And so we, we asked the developer what, what they could do to, to get us a little bit more area for a park. And they reconfigured probably three or four different times to get the five acre park out of that. Um, five acres with, uh, two parking areas. Think, did we talk about bathrooms or anything like that, or would you let the park district work that out?
Yeah.
We're gonna let the park district work that with the developer along with other amenities you would find in, you know, tree, shade trees, park benches, restrooms, you know, other things like that.
A lot of, uh, these developments out there, they're just not big enough to get contiguous park acreage in there. And the park district doesn't want anything less than five acres for play parks. They're, they're fine with the linear, uh, natural spaces on the slough. But if they want programmable park space, they know these five acres, otherwise it's not worth it to them. So we, I think we made the park district happy. Um, instead of what some of the other projects up this area are doing, they're doing, uh, like donation, financial donation of the park district. So instead of doing that, these guys are just providing a park.
And that four point eight two works for them.
Yeah, yeah, it's just under the five acre desire.
Right, but I'm just making sure.
Yeah, they told us they're okay with it. In fact, I think they said it was up there, okay with it when it was just over four. And then we asked for just a little bit more space.
Who made this question? Sorry, go ahead. Finish your question, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, not a question at this point, but, um, I, I would be happy to consider the park district's desire and request. With that being said, I like the canal as the dividing line and I, and I don't like to see that flop over. For the same reason, but I mean, I'm using the canal for a different reason than you are. You're, you're talking about it being adjacent to the canal, which is just a little bit overlap. And to me, that's a, that's a, a great delineation between those two land uses.
Yeah.
And, um, and I just, you know how I feel about the general plan, Charlie. Um, I think the expectation is, I mean, that's an easy line for the public to see when they look at the general plan. And to say, that's our line that we've been shown and own, I'm just gonna creep over, I have a problem with that. But I do, um, I do value the park district's thoughts too, so.
You're not wrong about the creek.
So I guess I'm, I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, maybe.
Go land or just to, or developers looking at property just to the west of this, asking the same question. Well, these guys, if they're gonna get R three, maybe we can ask for R three too. We've so far been able to push back and say, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
For the, for the park district's, uh, desired size of park, what I think I'd rather see is, uh, is a, a financial or maybe the land is, is donated by this developer and money is given back to make that park still happen.
Yeah.
By adjacent landlords. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Good thoughts. Commissioner Forre, you know, this stuff's in your portfolio, I appreciate it, everyone.
Kind of forgot that, but thanks for reminding me. So my first question, really I guess is more of a comment. This is currently all A one.
Yes.
Right? One acre lot.
Yes.
So in the general plan, as I remember through those conversations, we said we would consider RE fifteen, which is what the proposal here, but with contributions for trails, parks, others, so they get, it's not an automatic provision to give RE fifteen. Is that correct? I mean, it's everything we've done before. It's like, show us why you should not have, be required to do one acre lots. There has to be an incentive for the public, park is one of them. So why isn't the park already, you know, why are we saying we have to have higher density to get the park? In my mind, you gotta have a park and trails before even RE fifteen. Now we're taking this to the next extent, saying, well, I'll give you, you know, a park if you do RE fifteen. That's, I struggle with high density there. Um, RE, RE three, R three in that area, to my opinion, especially for that. Um, RE, RE three, R three in that area, it's my opinion, especially for that amount of, that number of units. I think lends itself to be problematic. Um, but I'd just like to see why. You know, it seems like we're automatically given RE fifteen when everything that we talked about was. You've got to earn the right for RE fifteen, it's not an automatic. So explain to me what we're doing there Charlie, cause that's not what, what I was sold on when we did the general plan.
Ag- agree, and I'm glad you pointed that out, in fact, there's a paragraph in the general plan that says. It's, it's basically. The way I crafted it was developers need to be on notice that if, if we're gonna enrich them with a little bit of land value. They need to en- enrich the community with, with something greater. So uh, our, our very first um, submittal on this project, I do believe showed. Um, just. Our one fifteen, uh, potential fifteen thousand square foot average lots down in that area. And a much smaller park area. Um, the question is, is how big of a park can we ask for um, out of different developers? So we've done some math on that. Um, if we're looking for ten acres per every one thousand um, uh. People, population, that's um, is that, that's uh, ten acres for every three hundred and thirty homes. Um, is the standard that the park district wants to go for. And we're looking at that being a gift from the developer. As opposed to trying to get that through an exaction, cause I think it'd be hard for us to do that through the exaction. Uh, based, when we worked with this developer, um. I don't know how the, how their books look, I don't, I don't know what the legend looks like and how the, the margins are balancing out. Um, on this, but I do know as we've talked to Doug and, um, others working on the project. It just wasn't isolating the way that they hoped. And I don't know what that means, if that's ten percent, twenty-five percent margin. Uh, maybe a good question for, for Doug if he's willing to talk about it, but we did push back pretty hard. I, I'm tickled to hear Doug say that he's pretty pleased with the way this is turning out because I think we pushed back. We've probably seen this redesigned ten different times, cause we said, not enough, it's not enough. Um, but more, more trails, more park, more this, more that. Um, and then when we went to the planning commission, I talked a little bit about how do we justify funding. Uh, the parks and the trails, everything extra that we were hoping for. Not as a default, not as a, they're going to default and give this development. And what the planning commission heard was, or saw, their discussion point was, we need some affordable housing. We know that across the canal, maybe there's some opportunities for uh, housing affordability, cause across the canal might be R three at some point in the future. Um, but there, there's no one over there asking for development right now. And the planning commission said, well, these guys are asking now, so if we can incentivize number one, affordable housing, number two. More programmable park space, number three, a heck of a lot more um, trail connections. That's what they thought it balanced out to give a little bit more density. Um, as far as the townhomes go, all, it's not all uh, free density. They first started out by taking the total gross acreage and dividing it by fifteen thousand square feet. And I can't remember exactly what the number was on that, but it was, it was high.
Two twelve and twenty eight. Okay, it says it right there on the little.
Okay, yeah, it's a two twelve, so the difference, uh, total unit count, you can see the differences between what they could have already gotten. Um, so if you were to exclude the, what is it, thirty something?
Thirty.
Thirty something additional townhomes. Um, which each of those buildings are, one, two, three, four, five, six duplexes. So uh, if you exclude thirty of those townhomes, you still could potentially get. Townhomes in there because the other lots in the development are not as small as they could go. In other words, if you ask, if you ask me to get rid of the townhomes, a lot of those larger lot sizes on the west side. Uh, would need to be reduced significantly in order to get the two hundred and twelve in there. Planning commission also liked the idea that maybe a little bit more density, uh. In exchange for them clustering, um, some of that density in townhome project. In exchange for a wider variety of housing product, larger lot sizes, medium lot sizes. Townhomes would work, make for a better community outcome in this area. So they put all four of those thoughts into that negotiation and then we worked with Doug to. Okay, and we're not suggesting that what should be done or has to be done, just giving you the, the details behind it. I don't know if Doug has an opinion on his margins and how it would work if we just did R one fifteen across the board.
You know, it, when you put in a park that size, I mean, that's a huge investment, as we all know. So that definitely helps in doing it the way we have it designed. Uh, you know, I thought about coming back or even talking about eliminating the need to have the R three like you mentioned. And going back to the two hundred and twelve lots, we'd make it work. But I don't know if I could make it work with a five acre park and doing all the other amenities, maybe we'd have to shrink that park a little bit to get. The two hundred and twelve lots, so that has to come out, you know, some of the, the averaging. Uh, when we are counting, you know, numbers. But uh, we've just felt that being that close to thirty-five hundred next to the uh, future zone. Uh, that's a good way to go, but like I say, we're presenting it hoping that uh. You guys feel the same way and you get enough in return to make it worthwhile, we feel that you do. Uh, in, in having that part go in, but as far as dollars and cents. Yeah, you know, it would be a, a huge minus if we lost thirty, but it ain't gonna kill the deal, we already own the land. So it's not like we can go back to the seller and say, hey, sharpen your pencil. But, but that makes sense.
Does, sure. Felix, how does the affordable housing, you said eight units, you talked to Andy about?
Yeah, eight percent of those ninety-eight, yeah, so basically.
So does that come under her program, are those, are those given to Weber Housing, how is that? How is that monitored?
The way I, the way I understand is we're gonna work together with her and they're gonna help us advertise that to bring people into the affordable housing. Uh, we have to get it down to a certain price range, and I believe it's four fifty is what she told us. And then, uh, you know, then that falls underneath what the county, you know, offers for the affordable housing. Uh, as far as our numbers where that's gonna be, I. You know, if we can go lower than four fifty, we will, I mean, I'm hoping that we can come in at a number lower than that on our townhomes. And as you know, you know, it's tough to do, get anything under five hundred, it's tough to do. But uh, we're committed to offer, you know, up to the eight percent. And uh, I think that's kind of the max that anybody's done so far. Uh, to make that work.
So this is, this is all for sale or is it, is it gonna be for rent project?
For sale.
All, so everything's gonna be fee simple?
Yes, I mean, we may keep a few of the townhomes rent, but they would be privately owned, it wouldn't be a mass rental project, no.
Alright, that's all I've got, any here?
Thanks, I've got a few, you're, I'd maybe be the least popular guy in the room or the most popular by the time we're done. But uh, uh, the comments made, so right now, the way this is zoned currently. Is we are allowing seventy-two homes on this, is that correct?
Right, y- yes, yeah, if you look at the one acre zoning.
According to, according Charlie, I want your attention here if you could please, if you'll just give me a few minutes, please. Uh, no, it's okay, I know you guys are though, but that's, I, I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm, this is important. So currently, the, the zone, the master plan calls this piece of property one acre houses, correct?
The current zone calls it one acre houses, the master plan calls it fifteen thousand square foot average.
Okay, so the master plan does call it a fifteen thousand square foot plan, okay. That helps, so I wanna also know, tell that, this, the, the slough or the, the. The right through here, this rhythm, right through here.
Yes.
Who's gonna maintain that after this is all done and beautified and trails?
The park district is volunteering to do that.
And, and, okay, so they say if they get this, that they'll also maintain this, or there's another five acres there, that's what they're saying, right?
That's right.
Okay, that's the second question, third question is, is, you know, we just finished the development of J D C Ranch. And out those high densities, uh, those high density doors, there were three hundred of them. Two hundred of them, we asked for senior living, fifty-five townhouse, or not a townhouse, but a, what do they call that, Charlie?
Um, they're doing.
Patio?
Yeah, patio home, thank you.
Why, why are we not consistent with what we've done already in the past over here?
Uh, with patio homes, we certainly could be, we were just going with the, um, developer asked.
Don't we add, don't we look for projects that are, a family can move into it and start, and then they go to somewhere else? Then they go to somewhere else, and then they go to somewhere else before they die?
That's exactly.
In the same community?
It's exactly what a couple of different planning commissioners mentioned. Um, in, in their support for the project, cause the kids could be in the townhomes and then. You can get the, the aging population to move into the smaller lot sizes. But we recognize, and I think the planning commission recognizes, there is a little bit of a missing piece in there, if you're just looking for uh, retirement homes. Um, you still have to have somebody go out and mow the lawn on those six thousand square foot.
That's right, and so for me, just a moment please, so for me, um. You might can get me to this number, I, I think it's pretty well thought out, but. There's gotta be a senior component on this or patio homes. The density still works, I think, well, let me rephrase that. With other developers who've come in here, the density works for them, I would suppose. In my uneducated mind, that if it works for one and we're trying to be equal, that it's gonna work for the next, the next one. I like the senior product, I think it works well for our community, I think there's room for a lot more of it. And statistically speaking, with the age of those who are baby boomers, it's gonna be needed. So I think the only part that I see in this that, that would be more valuable as far as I'm concerned. Is taking sections, whether you take this and make this a section here or somehow. Uh, where you have some senior development, I'm not trying to recreate your plan wherever you put that, I don't really, doesn't really matter to me. But senior, I would like to see at least fifty percent of those doors, senior.
The multifamily door.
I'd like to see fifty percent of that number as something to do with the patio. Cause the other one, we did sixty-seven percent.
Right.
So I don't, unless that number's fifty percent, I'm gonna have a difficult time. The other answers that you've given me, I, I can get on, I think I can get on board with them. But, but that one's kind of an important one, those were the three things. Does that bring up any other comments or questions from either of the two of you?
No.
Let's go to you, back to you, Mr. Hamblin.
Okay, uh, these lots that surround the park, all these lots right here, their size were patio homes.
Well, or they can do those.
We can do uh, senior housing in there.
Okay, but you could also do those ones that have the two car garage with all the living area upstairs and the kitchen in the back. Those two story, I've seen those, I'm familiar with that product.
And so, I mean, they could be designated for senior, or they could be designated for just regular patio homes. We haven't even discussed really the option of doing the senior, which I like the idea, I don't oppose that one bit. But that's what all these lots around here, you can tell they're quite a bit smaller. That is what the plan is with those lots.
What you've got then is you're still gonna give me, what you're gonna do is even if you added all these lots and let's say there's fifty. You're only giving me a, a thirty-three percent senior product there.
With the sixty-four lots.
If you did all sixty-four of them there, you're still about, you're still gonna give me about thirty percent. Can you get, I need, I'd like to see that number up somewhere around the fifty percent.
Right.
Because we're doing it sixty-something percent, some of the other stuff that are doing.
So I just have a thought and this might be a question for Charlie with affordable housing, cause we'd have to probably reach out to her again. But with it being senior living, would that affect the affordable housing program that we'd be associated with? Are we able to offer that only or, or with the seniors, or does it have to be a broader base, if that makes sense?
I can't be for sure, but I know a lot of seniors are still having a hard time too, so.
Are you asking for deed restriction to make it to provide an older. Uh, development, or would you rather just see them be um, patio homes? And the opportunity for the market to.
I, I don't think you wanna go fifty-five plus and go through the mechanics, I just do a patio home. That's available for somebody at any age, and that meets your criteria.
And is a patio home, Commissioner, just to, so I know where your brains are, uh, is that a single story at grade?
Yeah, no stairs.
Right, okay.
Just making sure we all understand, so in those cases, we could still do eight percent of the townhomes or even some of the patio homes if you wanted to. Uh, to be uh, for the housing affordability. The way the housing affordability side of it works is we put a deed restriction on about that eight percent. Um, and, and the Beatles over the housing authority, every time it changes hands or is sold. Um, she just looks at the numbers to make sure that who, who is being sold to meets that income threshold. Um, and that the rate, the market rate which is being sold meets the certain uh, threshold as well.
Okay.
But your question is, yes, we could bump the number of patio home lots up and. We just do that in making some of those other lots, uh, you know, smaller or just.
You can make those numbers work, don't I, yeah, I'm sure.
We could.
Any other questions?
Would you be opposed to patio, uh, patio home duplexes or fourplexes, that's what we're doing in J D C.
Yeah, that's, I, I don't have the issue with that. You're gonna, you're gonna, listen, uh, we're just talking about doors here.
Right.
You're attaching those townhouses together, I don't care if you attach those patio homes together, that, that makes. That's okay within that little footprint that you got there, but I think it'd be, I think it would be wise. As a, for a project, I think it would be wise for us as we, uh, as a, as a body politic. To at least look after our aging population here as well, well, sometimes we forget, we forget them, Ms. Russell?
I just have a really quick question, um, have you spoken to, since you're in the West Haven annexation area? Have you spoken to the West uh, Haven Special Service to hit grid on the sewer connection?
We're working on that right now, we've talked to them, I'm also looking at some other options.
Okay, cause they recently passed the resolution, okay, I just wondered, are you aware of that?
Fully aware of it and we've got other options as well that may even be better than going through them.
Okay.
And so, yes, uh, thank you.
Thank you, I think, I think you, unless you have any other quote, you.
I don't, I'm good.
I think you've got kind of the feeling from this body right now and take it where you go. But I'm gonna wanna see a fifty percent on that part.
Ask you one more question.
Uh, no, but thanks for asking, but go ahead, please be, but please be work.
Um, as far as the R three zone goes, we don't need to rezone it to R three, we could do this through an F P D overlay zone and a development agreement. We could just do a development during it without the F P D overlay zone. And so if you're okay with the idea of maybe a few townhomes, or the townhomes that are here, uh, fifty percent of them being patio homes. You don't have to paint the color on the map, the R three, so you're still observing the general plan. Um, general plan does talk about giving higher densities like this to projects that do quality smart growth standards. And so you wouldn't be running afoul of the general plan to do it.
With that changed though, I would love just at least a consensus from the planning commission on that. From their executive group or something on that. That's great, thank you very much for your presentation today, appreciate it. We'll go ahead and take just a moment to switch out the players in the room.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, thanks for coming, appreciate it, thank you.
Right here, this is a chance for, we're gonna move now on to the discussion regarding the state ARPA funds from the D W Q. D W Q contract, Ms. Stephanie Russell, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Um, Ms. Russell, I have something very quick for you. Uh, I, in order to uh, start drawing down on our ARPA funding that we got from the state. Appropriation two years ago for the West Weaver sewer. Um, I need to have a signature on this particular certification. So I brought Chris Proppin in, just to make sure, I don't think this needs to go on the agenda, but I wanna make sure Chris was okay with that. It's the F F T A certification, it's Federal Funding Accountability and Transparency Act of two thousand and six. And it requires grantee reporting the names and total compensation of grantees by most high compensating executives. If the following are met, so I just. if the following are met. So I just wanted to make sure that they could sign this and not have to go through.
If it's connected with the previously approved grant permission.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all it is. That was it. Less than two minutes, I think.
Sign away. I don't usually mess with.
No. Listen, I'm happy to. Let me, what was that name of that? Alexander here like this, Gage. How's that?
I like it.
I want to make sure they can read this signature.
They know where to come.
Yeah.
John Hancock.
We can get our money.
Very good.
So we are going to get the money?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's coming.
Okay, we've only got five more minutes. We'll just take just a moment here. All right. Yeah, and do the video. Hey Steph. Would you be so kind as to ask Christie to let me unmute and tell her to make you a co-host? No. There you go. For those of you online, we've, uh, we're unmuted, but we're trying to get the video to work. Just one moment, please. All right. Commissioners. On this Weber County work session agenda for this Monday, the twenty-fifth of March, we're now on a discussion regarding the twelfth street design change order and cause the estates access. Gary Myers, Tucker White, Sean Wilkinson. The three of you are here. Mr. Myers. It's nice to see you first on the list so you can present this change order to Twelfth Street.
I love it. I love it on first. So, uh, commissioners, we, uh, we have wrapped up our design on Twelfth Street. In fact, it's actually being advertised as we speak. Uh, this is for the next section to pick up where we left off at seventy-one Hood West and move westerly to where we, where the bid is taken us to. Still to be determined. However, through the course of the design of the project, we made a few changes different to how we previously did the project. And, uh, our consultant has reached out to us saying, hey, those changes resulted in a change order that we didn't ask you for initially, but they would like to ask us for a change order now, now that we're done. Um, so for your review, Tucker handed you guys a copy of this. Uh, they identified the, the three different areas of which the change, changes occurred in. One was additional drainage design. And let me just explain that to you. Uh, we, we changed how the drainage worked out there a little bit. Previously, we put what we call hips and valleys in where we put highs and low spots in the road. We changed that to where we kind of just held the center line elevation and let it sheet off towards the ditches. Uh, this particular section goes out through uh, some areas where we don't see a need in the future where we would ever want to put curb and gutter in this section of the road. And so that's why we eliminated the hips and valleys and, and changed our design approach. Additionally, um, there was some, some design effort that they needed to do that was not done uh, previously, uh, and we had been upfront with them about that, but there was some extra design effort in extending the Warren irrigation canal, Box Colored. This is a canal that crosses Twelfth Street. In order to widen Twelfth Street, we needed to extend the, the ends of this to, to accommodate our design and the widening. So that's one change. Uh, secondly, oh, I kind of covered it already, changes to the vertical profile, which also led to some changes in some of the driveway accesses, not only into homes, but fields. Because the way the design had been done previously, we, by changing it, we changed the elevations of the road and the accesses there. And then lastly, there was some additional survey, uh, that needed to be done as well too. And in, to address those items that we've requested. So essentially what they've come up with was, was three different areas. Those three different areas totaled an additional sixty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents in request.
Gary, you know how much I love it when you bring these things here.
I do know, Commissioner. I'm very familiar with your feelings on that.
Yet you approached it rather cavalier.
No, 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 not cavalier.
Okay.
We, uh, we wanted to be very forthcoming on the information as to what the changes represented. Um, so we didn't want this to feel as if we were trying to.
Bamboozle?
Yeah, yeah, bewilder you or confuse you in some fashion. But, uh, it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Initially, they came to us and we went back and met with them. And it was actually a little bit higher and we talked with them and kind of had some discussions as to what the change order, in our opinion, should consist of. They revised their number, got it down to what it is now. Um, and, uh, and gave us a little bit more detail as to what, what their billings represented that accumulated to this.
You feel comfortable with it?
I do. I do.
Great. Commissioner Bollos, comments or questions?
You know, being in your portfolio, we don't, Sharon and I don't have over just quite like this. I can give pointing that out.
Yeah. Mr. Thor.
Well, that's kind of where I was headed with this instance in my portfolio.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. We don't want to tread on your portfolio.
So, I mean, these are some major changes. Why? Tell me why this wasn't discussed in that original R F P or proposal. Why? How can these are change orders? I mean, well, these are fairly significant. You'd think they would have been addressed from the beginning. So explain to me why they weren't.
Well, what, what.
Trying to understand.
What they tried to do was they tried to address these through the process in the, in the duration of the project, rather than come to us with a change order then and then have a larger contract than us not use it. And so they came to us at the end. There's a lot of different ways to skin a cat on something like this and I don't know. Good, bad, right or wrong. Uh, that's kind of the way we came up with, with this.
Basically, we didn't have a bid, these three things on the original contract is what you're telling me. Right.
Yeah, these are additional stuff. I think the, the design, so we gave them the sixty percent design package that we had previously.
Okay.
And I just think they pointed some things out that, that were missing. And I think a lot, there's a few things in the right away contract that, that may have been overskip or skipped on the original design. And so I had to go back in and add that on a couple of them. And just, I don't know, I, I feel really good with this design we're at because they took a lot of time and effort. They were out there a lot to, to discuss the drainage. I thought we needed to buy the drainage specifically. So I, I think what they did really nailed everything down to how it should be on this final design. And it's like, I don't know, I don't know how we missed it on the first one.
Drainage is always something that's very tricky out there, Commissioner, particularly through the section we're going. A lot of these farmers are very, uh, very concerned about any changes we might make to the drainage and how it works and functions out there. So taking a little extra time should kind of be that ounce of prevention kind of, kind of approach to this. And so we're hoping, we're, we're never going to guarantee there's never a change order. Especially when we get into construction, Commissioner Harvey, you should understand that. But, uh, but yes, it, it, we're hoping that this does minimize the impact of potential change orders during.
We did add, um, there's a crossing further out west, west of eighty-three hundred that was not an original, uh, bid for R F P. And there's a main crossing on the twelfth street for the, one of the major ranges that is severely undersized and a lot higher in elevation than it should be.
That the one west of eighty-three?
Yes.
Right by Global Model Airport.
That's right.
Okay.
The last, the last two years, particularly last year, as much moisture as we got early in the season, that crossing showed us how undersized and
Yeah.
the improvements that needed to happen.
Four feet too high.
Uh, yeah, i- if we can drop that, like we're, we had them design and help us put together, that will help drainage everywhere out there significantly, including all the industrial spaces coming as well too. So we wanted to get that addressed.
So that was, that was one of the ones that was impacted. And then also with all the talk about the industrial development out there, they looked at kind of the sizing of the pipes and upsizing a few of them to kind of create more of a main drain. So that was, they came to us and kind of thought, they shared that with us and I thought it was a good idea. So we kind of went down a few of the crossings.
It did. So at the end of the day, we got right sized pipe. We're going to flow it in the right direction. It's going to go to the lake. We're not trying to run water the opposite way. That's right. So I don't have to, but I wouldn't hear from Randy exactly.
No, no.
Well, you might. Well, you know, I think you went to an Elvis sponsor the other night, so.
But, but this is something we've kind of known needed some attention and we're, we're happy to get it addressed and, and have it. Okay, I've got my questions answered.
I've got one more thing. You know, the next time we do these things out there, I think we need to talk to these farmers out there in advance of where we're headed because these guys are smart. They're super smart. And they've been watching the way that water flows for a long time. I don't care what the machines and the, everything else tells us. I think we need to talk to them because they're, they're.
Watch that seal was out there a lot.
Good point.
That's a big, that's a big part of what this change order represents is there was a lot of conversations that went on with multiple individuals. Tucker was present for a lot of those, more so than I was.
Those guys are geniuses.
Glad to hear that. Well, they've worked it for years. Yeah.
I know, I know.
Dangerous. So they'll tell you which way the water flows. And that's why they're concerned about the water, how it flows.
That's right.
And the elevation and everything, they want to keep it down to drain the land as well.
It's pretty flat out there in case you haven't driven out.
Pretty flat, kind of like it is.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm good.
Mr. Bollos, any last thoughts or questions, comments? Okay. All right. You've got a consensus.
Thank you. I kind of tagged another issue in here I wanted to bring up with you.
Well, that's nice.
What I, Commissioner, I'm efficient. Um, Causey Estates. So we are getting ready to move forward with a, a project with federal highways. Part of that project involves replacing the bridge just east of the Red Rock Grill or whatever it is called now.
The Red Rock.
I apologize. I don't know the. Taco, something about tacos or something.
Probably stopping. They're not open on Mondays, in case you've ever been up there with an internet card. The phone's not available.
I, I knew.
And there's no cell service up there.
A good, a good friend of mine had that problem one day.
Just in case you were wondering.
Yeah, you don't get cell service.
No, uh-uh.
So as part of the design process, we looked at that bridge. Okay, there's two ways we could go. We could cast a bridge in place, which is how the existing bridge was built. Or we could demo it and install a precast structure, which is significantly faster. We cast it in place, you're looking probably two to three months to, to dig it out, set the forms, place it, let the concrete cure enough that it needs to and, and everything else. Whereas if we kept, uh, use precast, excuse me, use a precast structure in different portions, that's a significantly faster project, less impact area.
More expensive?
No, not really. Not really. Um, we, we got some bids on it and it actually is pretty close. Um, however, that still brings up the issue of actually building it. We're going to have to open cut that road. That is the only road in there.
And that's, so that cuts everybody out of Causey Estates, the Boy Scouts, the Causey Lake, every.
That's right. So as an effort to minimize impacts to this as much as we could, we kind of talked to everybody a little bit. We identified fifteen. We identified fifteenth of November as when a good time to begin that would be. Because that, that gets rid of summertime traffic, Boy Scout traffic, as well as sightseeing and recreation traffic and hunting traffic to the CWMU that the outfitter uses. The whole north side of that road is a CWMU that, uh, Kenny, what's his last name?
Robbins.
No, good heavens, you guys. I'm so bad with names. Anyway, um, I feel bad that I forgot his name when she put the phone with him. Anyway, regardless, he, he mentioned that works for him with his outfitting. He has, he still has tags that he accesses into there, but he can come around from the north side for the tags that remain for antlers help. It's the deer, the, the antler deer that he's worried about the most. And all his hunts are done by the 10th of November. So that works for him.
They're all done?
For the deer. Yep, correct. Um, so however, that does have some impact to the Causey Estates folks. In talking with the HOA president, we have at least two individuals he mentioned that are full-time year-round residents. Um, and interestingly enough, Sean and I, if Sean chooses to attend, we'll be attending their HOA board meeting next month in April. I've already spoken with him, Brian Henigar, I believe was his name. Um, and we'll be there to talk through this and kind of talk through some options. Well, the options we'll suggest is if there's a way for them to have either a second vehicle or an ATV or something they can leave on the closed side of the bridge. So that it's parked there. Uh, they drive to and from their house to the closure with that. They walk through sort of a pedestrian structure that we build to get them across the creek. And then they leave their car over there somewhere by the Red Rock Grill to continue down to work or wherever.
What is it, a ten day if they do it?
So so that's the question, Commissioner. This exact structure was installed up on the road to Wellsville, just west of, kind of where the Maverick and the Burger King and the Clarit's right there over the Little Bear. They did that in about a week and a half. Now, to tell everybody it's a guaranteed two-week closure, we're kind of setting ourselves up for some issues. So we've, we've indicated to the HOA folks, we're probably three weeks, maybe four, because the other factor we don't have control of is weather. You go out there November, November 15th, the minute you cut something open that's time sensitive guaranteed. When it's going to come early, that, yeah. But talking with everybody, we think we can probably do the two to three week window, getting that precast structure installed, assuming the weather doesn't beat us up too much and everything goes okay. The residents have still indicated they would like to uh, maintain some access. I've been contacted by a few of them and I'm sure it'll come up again at the HOA meeting as well. If we use federal money for this, there becomes a lot more strings attached to it to meet federal requirements. If the residents were to negotiate privately with the two landowners that they'd have to negotiate with, it could be simpler and significantly cheaper. They asked me to see if the county would be willing to approach this with helping with that solution of negotiation.
Well, I think I know it's, I think Feeney's on both of that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm happy to talk to, in fact, I saw him up there the other day. I'm happy to talk to Feeney. We've represented him in the past. Yeah, and, but my main point, why does it take two to three weeks? Look, when I oversaw you, Doc,
Yep.
they talked, they wanted a full day to move the bridges in and out. I said, no, I want that done in 12 hours between seven o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning. Guess what? Now they do it overnight. And I'm talking, you know, big bridges. So why the two, two weeks, I
They could have all the substrate structure in place.
I'm a little confused.
And great, great question. So we're, we're reinstalling.
Need to have you Doc run this project? I've got Carlos right here on the phone.
This is a little bit different approach, Commissioner, whereas we're going to remove the existing bridge and install the new one in the exact same location where the existing one is. So that, that bridge is probably a hundred years older more. It's in old. So it's not coming out in big pieces. It's going to take a track coat and a jackhammer. And it's going to come out in small pieces. Then they're going to have to excavate it, prep it, figure out how to bypass the water in the process that still is coming out of non-stop. Then, then they'll bring in the new structure. The new structure will be prefabbed and ready to go. It's just getting the site and location.
Give me a, give me a plat. I want to make sure I can call Feeney's and just they're real, they, they're good to work with.
Yeah. And, and I've kind of approached a little bit with some of the Feeney's and they're, yes, they're on board. Um, yeah, I, I, I feel look, I take no pleasure in shutting this road down, right? But the reality of it is the existing bridge is old enough. It's falling apart. We have rebar exposed on that existing bridge.
Which Feeney did you talk to?
Was it, is there a Kathleen?
Kathleen.
Yeah.
They, they live on Taylor and
Yeah.
Over by their customer.
Of course. Larry, Larry here asks, her ass is kind of the guy that's running it for now. He's married to one of the daughters, which is, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So, and, and they were willing participants, right? They just wanted to know what it was. And when I spoke to them, that was back when we were looking at building a bypass to this. However, as federal highways put a cost towards that bypass just to have it built and then torn out, it was right around six or seven hundred thousand dollars plus the cost of paying for the easement for traffic. Cause, cause there's enough of a great separation there. We have to go back quite a ways in each direction.
But it allows to make that.
Well, it may not be feasible, but at least we should ask so we can tell the people up there we've
Sure.
All terms.
Sure.
Gary, have you talked to Weaver Basin at all about this?
Weaver Basin has come full circle on this. They're, they're in favor, they're, they're on board. I shouldn't say anyone's in favor, but they're on board with the shutdown. What Weaver Basin's going to do, they have to maintain access to the dam.
Right, because of the Bureau.
Yeah, and for emergency purposes, right? We just never know.
Right.
They're going to bring a pickup truck and they're going to leave it on the east side of the closure. And so
We have to build a footbridge no matter what anyway.
We do, we do, we do.
But if there's any equipment, what about the Boy Scouts up in there?
Boy Scouts are good. I talked with them.
Shut down. They shouldn't be
End of August, they're done and they're wrapped up and, and done for the
You talk to Culture Parks and Rec on Memorial?
I have not, but I will. But usually by their fifteenth of September, thirty, if they're done and wrapped.
Yeah, but there's always that little lodge rental and things like that. But let's just cross.
We'll bring that by then, yeah.
And then I, is there a way to do a notification sign on the road? This road will be permanently clo- or closed for
Yes, absolutely.
A month or so in advance as people are going by it.
As it approaches, probably what we'll do is we'll get that sign up at least, like you say.
Thirty days out.
Joe, Joe's got one of those signs that we can program and have it say what we need and we'll haul it up.
Put your telephone number on it.
This is 2026 that we're talking. So we're, we're still quite a ways out.
Yeah.
So this November twenty twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get ahead of this, just for a clear reason that we, we want this impact to be as minimal to the individuals as possible, specifically the residents of Causey Estates, right? And we're just trying to work through this to the best solution possible. So.
No, yeah, that's great.
Questions?
Question?
Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you so much for your, anything else you want to slot in there?
No, I mean, it was, it was there. It was there. Just maybe think about it. And if there's a monetary amount you would be willing to throw towards that, that, that would be
Well, let me, I'll talk to the Feeney's just to see what their idea is. But I mean, six or seven hundred thousands, yeah, that's, uh, my mind never easy.
Yeah, that doesn't work. Yeah. So, yeah, we're just trying to minimize impacts and costs. Everything. So. And who knows, Commissioners? I mean, the reality of it is we've had multiple years, including the last two, when November fifteenth till the first of December, winter really hasn't started to pile up by then.
What's the length of that whole thing?
Oh gosh, that bridge is
How wide is it? I mean
It's probably twenty, twenty-one feet wide across. And it might be less than that in length across, right?
Is there a little place we can just put an old railroad car, a flatbed railroad car on there with a couple of step ups and over?
The problem is if, if the federal, if, if the this is a federal project, all kinds of different regulations kick in. We cannot just put a, a railroad car in. So that, that becomes the issue. If you want to kick that out of the Causey project, just have us do it, then
Separate from the project.
Right.
Privately with the county and the residents.
And that whole, that whole financial thing falls on us then.
Whatever. Now, it won't be as expensive, but it will still be an expense.
Yeah, and they're, they're picking up the full
Correct. This is, this is part of
Part of that fifteen million.
Access.
Okay.
Exactly. Yep, that, that's the difference.
Got it.
It's complicated when you close a road.
Yeah.
And we, we get that. We understand that. We're sensitive to that.
You know, when I was a kid, we used to set up these ramps. Anyway.
Did you have a flag painted on the top of your cart?
No. Uh, I may or may not have been eluding as well. All right. Hi. Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Then I'm going to entertain a motion for us to move into closed session to, to, to discuss the purchase, exchange or lease of real property at the Willow Brook Lane discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. We'll now go into closed session. Christie, if you'd make the, the, uh, proper commendation.